Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of El Segundo's first town hall meeting regarding local hazard mitigation plan. And this is an informational meeting for an opportunity for you to ask questions and to see what we're doing specifically for updating our current hazard mitigation plan and what does this mean. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Todd DeVoe. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of El Segundo. And in the room with us today, we have Chief Avery, who is the Fire Chief, and also on the Planning Committee, and Victor Lopez, who is the Superintendent for Public Works, and he is also on the Planning Committee as well. So what is the purpose of this meeting? It's to review and discuss the local hazard mitigation plan and really go over what it is. And I have a small PowerPoint presentation that I really want to bring up to you all so you can see what we're talking about. So what is mitigation? It's a kind of an interesting word, right? So mitigation specifically is just fixing problems as we find them before they become problems. So for instance, in public works area, so say we see maybe a slope or something like that that needs to be fixed. We'll go forth and be proactive and put a wall there, retain a wall, so the slope doesn't fall into somebody's backyard. That's the concept of mitigation in a nutshell. So mitigation, for every dollar that we save or that we spend in mitigation efforts, saves between $6 to $14 in our recovery efforts. So preparedness, prevention, and mitigation, those three areas actually end up saving residents money and taxpayer monies. And this is why it's important for us to do mitigation work. And also, when we, if you guys paid attention to things that are happening with some grant opportunities, we did a Bolton Brace program here that was a grant program. And that, doing the retrofitting in your home, for every dollar that you spend on retrofitting your home for earthquake preparedness, saves you $4 in avoided losses in the future. So what are the benefits of mitigation? So we do have reduction in deaths, property repair costs, additional living expenses that occur. In other words, maybe you have to rent a home or something if something happens to your home. Direct and indirect business interruption, right? And so working with local businesses to create business continuity plans so we can reduce the interruption in business. Loss of services to the community. So as a city, we look at mitigating issues that are associated with city services and city buildings so we can continue to serve the public after a crisis occurs. And then also the, oddly enough, it also reduces the need for urban search and rescue, rescue costs after an event happens. And so when we're thinking about an event, right, the one that we want to talk about the most here, natural disaster, is earthquake, and this is where we can do a lot of prevention. And we've seen how earthquake prevention in buildings, retrofitting of buildings, has actually come to play and helped us out in this nation. So if you compare, say, an earthquake that happens here in California to, say, an earthquake that happens in other countries, a small earthquake can do a lot of damage where it doesn't do the same amount of damage here. So retrofitting is working. Sorry about the slide. So how are we doing this? Well, we have some new requirements. So the local mitigation planning book, handbook from FEMA, has put some new requirements into what mitigation and what they're looking at. And one of the things that we really need to focus on here in our planning process is working with at-risk and vulnerable populations. And it's kind of a squishy term, right? Because we, vulnerable populations, what does that mean? At-risk populations, what does that mean? Well, it can go anywhere from elderly population on a fixed income, right? Which we would really call that a vulnerable population because if they have damage done to their home, it's going to be hard for them to pay to have those fixed. All the way, and we can also discuss vulnerable populations with the homeless population, foreign language speakers that maybe we might not be able to reach out in conventional ways. Those are the populations that we're talking about. And we're going to do a heavy focus on reaching out to those populations to make sure that they are part of this. And so we have a holistic approach to how we're looking at hazard mitigation. And so we are reaching out to the community as a meeting like we're having today to see what we can do for you and how we can add your concerns into this planning process. So the planning process. So we're going to organize the planning process into a couple of different steps. One is, we have planning team meetings. There's about four of those. And we have community planning meetings, which we're doing today. We're going to have four of these. And then once we have the plan written, and we have a contractor who is actually writing the plan right now, once the plan is written and ready to go, we're going to put it back out to the community for review. Under the review, we'll have a survey that's sent out to, everybody in the community can participate in this. And I really highly ask and encourage you to participate. This survey will go out. You will take this. We'll review it again. And your comments and concerns are going to be heard, and then we will take those and put those into the plan as well. Once the plan is accepted through our process, then this will go up to the State of California. Excuse me. Go up to the State of California. The State of California will then approve the plan at their level. And then it goes out to FEMA. FEMA takes a look at this plan. They'll approve the plan as well. And then it comes back to City Council for final approval and adoption. And that's the basis of it. So we have our planning, our assessed risk and capabilities. I think that's a critical step into that process, right? So we have taken a look at, and Victor Lopez, I want to put a shout out to you, sir, for, in your team, for going out and really taking a look at some of the hazards that we're really looking at. Now, when we talk about hazards, there's two sets of hazards. We have our focused hazards that are natural disasters. So droughts, floods, geological hazards, hazard material released due to natural hazards, and then seismic activities, right? Those are the critical areas that we're looking at for natural hazards. And then we go into areas of concern that we're going to talk about, but that's not natural. So there's two areas. And so the other area here is like aircraft incidents, for instance, hazardous material release that's not caused by a disaster, a natural disaster, and then human-caused hazards. And there could be more, right? And this is kind of why we want to have these community meetings, to get your input to what you think should be things that we should be focusing on. And if we can focus on this and take a look at it. There's some very narrow definitions that FEMA has set that we can really work on. So there might be some things out here that you're concerned about, and I'm not saying that you shouldn't be concerned about it, but we have to stay within, for this particular plan, within that narrow band of what FEMA is looking at. And then, again, adopt and implement the plan. And that's the basis there, is implementing the plan, which is critical for this. And what this does when we implement the plan is it also opens us up as a city for additional grant fundings coming from FEMA to help us mitigate those problems. So that's why this is a very important plan to go through. So we talked about the community outreach strategy a little bit. And so we will, you'll be seeing here shortly through email and through outreach. And we have a public outreach program where we're meeting at the farmer's market on Thursdays to give information out. You can go over there, talk to us there. You talk to me there personally. Well, I'll have a QR code there that you can scan to go and put more information into the surveys and to really have that engagement. We're also going to be pushing stuff through our social media, through the Emergency Preparedness Survey, like I said, the review and planning of the planted leadership team, and then the public forums like this. So we'll have four of these total, three after today. I want to discuss the community lifelines here for a minute because this is what, at the end of the day, our hazard assessment is going to be looking at. And what this means are, the community lifelines are the critical areas that keep a city functioning, a community functioning after and during a crisis. So we have safety and security. We have food, water, and shelter. Medical, oops, sorry. Medical and fuel, communications, transportation, and of course, hazardous materials. And this PowerPoint presentation will be available online as well if you guys want to take a look at it closely. Those are the areas that we're looking at. It's the community lifelines that were set up by FEMA. And these are the guidelines that we are using for our planning process. So how do we identify hazards? This is the 2020 County of Los Angeles Hazard Mitigation Plan. We'll look at what the county is saying, where we have issues. We look at what Cal OES says that are issues. We look at the, what we're looking at specifically as we look around our city specifically internally and also through the Geological Society. So those areas that are saying, these are our problems, we take a look at them and we're going to rate them. And so when we say we're rating the hazards, it's not like saying, hey, which one's better than the other, right? It's saying, what is the impact on the community, right? So let's say, for instance, an earthquake, right? It's, we'll say, a median probability, which means we're not having one every year or every day, although we did have one today. You know, and the size of the earthquake. But however, if it's a, say, a 6.5 or greater, it's going to have a significant impact on our community. And that significant impact means what services can we provide for you, right? So when we're looking at significant impact, that's how we measure it. How long is the city going to be, how long are our doors at City Hall going to be shut so we can't provide services if we have this earthquake? So that's how we measure significant impact on how we can provide services. So when you see that on the matrix, we'll push out afterwards. That's what that means. So for us, the 2024 Hazard Mitigation hazards are looking at earthquake, flood, disease, weather for extreme heat, drought, the hurricanes on there because we did actually have one. Hurricane Hillary, if you guys kind of remember that one. And then tropical storms, which we just had in February, which has significant impact on our community, and then tsunamis. So we're looking at existing and future capabilities and increasing the resilience. And that's the critical part of what we're doing here, is to increase the resilience and the readiness of our city. So we're looking at regulatory issues such as codes, ordinances, policies, laws, right? And then using administrative tech tools and tech, for what we do here from staff is what we can do. That's not necessarily law, but administrative rules that we can put out there to help, and tools that we can help with making sure that you are taken care of. We're looking at financial issues, specifically how does it impact us financially with taxes and grants and things like this? And then education outreach, and so what we're doing, again, like our Thursday evening things at the farmer's market, the community outreach, fire safety, flood safety, preparedness information. And then we also have volunteer opportunities through our Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT program, and through our ham radio operators, which is the RACIS program. And those also help with the community outreach education programs. So how do we develop the strategy? We have our goals. It's a coordinated strategy with the general plan and the public safety element. So we have to look at the current safety element. Do we have to update that as well? And that goes into community development side of things and planning. Infrastructure element, how does our infrastructure is impacted? How are we working with, say, like the MTA or Metro specifically with our infrastructure there and capital improvement programs? And then a comprehensive range of actions that will reduce the impacts on the identified hazards. And so this comes into where, like, Public Works has a heavy lift here, and how do we fix those potential hazards that we register? We talked about this a little bit already, the approval and implementation plan. The formal review process is critical, and this kind of is critical to understand is that FEMA's rules have changed over the last six to eight months, and there's kind of a flux here. And so our plan has to be written in a way that FEMA wants to see it and has to address the issues. And so that's what we're working hard on right now, to make sure that we're meeting those rules and regulations that are set by FEMA. So we will get approved. And so that's, it's a process and a half, so please, everybody bear with us as we're going through this, and we'll definitely keep you updated on where we're at with that part. And so FEMA issued the approval pending application, and then City Council adoption. And then implementation planning here, it's not, we just don't put this into a binder and like leave it. We actually use this as the bible, if you will, to do our work, right? So, and picking on Victor since he's in the room, you know, so when he's looking at things that he needs to fix, right? He takes a look at our plan and says, okay, where does this meet this threshold and where can we get funding for it? Can we use this plan? And that's how this plan is used. So it's an operational plan. It's not just on a binder sitting on somebody's desk. So, I think we're done with the PowerPoint presentation portion of this. And that's the planning process that we have. And so I want to open it up, and I know we only have a few people live in the room. And if you guys are listening on TV, you can please email me at tdevo@elsagundo.org. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have there. But in the room, are there any comments or questions that you have specifically on our plan, on the focus areas, and how we're moving forward? Sir? So the question was, do I anticipate any raise in taxes or fees to fund this mitigation program? No, it's the opposite. This actually, this plan, once we get it done, will actually increase funding opportunities from FEMA. So when we have an issue, say, for instance, and everybody is seeing the slope on Imperial that kind of slid during the rainstorms, the mitigation funds will pay for that. And not just for the area where it fell, where the slope fell. We could actually get a wall paid for, pending that we go through all the steps properly, right? I'm not promising anything, but we can actually get a wall paid for that would take care of that entire slope so it would never happen again. And it doesn't cost us anything. Well, let me rephrase that. It doesn't cost us much. There's a little bit of match funds, but we do this through. Match funds are kind of an interesting point. There's normally a 25% match. But it's normally done through stuff that we're already, like our time on the job, the equipment that we're using, things like this. So there's no direct money coming out of the budget necessarily. It's normally used in kind match, so. And that's how it's done. Good question. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? So the question was, are there any strings attached to the money coming in from us? Do we have to do any federal programs because we're taking money? I'm going to answer this in a weird way. Not at this time. I'm not saying that an administration can't come in and change that, but at this point, no. I mean, the only strings are attached is that we have to identify them beforehand and, you know, say what we're looking at, and that's it. But there's no, there isn't any other additional, like, to recovery dollars that we have to, I don't know, do whatever you want, whatever. Good, bad, or indifferent, you know, what the federal government wants us to do. No. There are no strings attached at this time. Any other questions? Sir? It shouldn't, it shouldn't, it shouldn't create any new requirements. However, and again, I'm going to couch this a little bit. However, if it finds, like, for instance, that new construction, right? So this, existing construction would probably be not, but new construction may have something to earthquake safety issues. And we see this all the time anyway, right? So as we upgrade building codes specifically after an event or whatever, you know, so. So you might see that happen to new construction, but it really shouldn't impact existing structures. I say shouldn't because I got to give that a little bit of wiggle room. Sir? Oh, great question. So the question is, how does the SBA, which is the Small Business Administration, help local businesses? Well, it doesn't just help local businesses. It also helps local homeowners or residents for that matter. And what they do is after an earthquake or a disaster, they'll come in and they'll give either low interest or no interest loans, and in some cases, grants to communities, to business owners and to homeowners to fix their homes. And I want to kind of put this in this, although it's not really part of what we're necessarily talking about today, one of the things that we need to stress as preparedness and to become a disaster-resilient community is proper insurance for your homes, whether it's your earthquake insurance or flood insurance. These things, you can get them, and if you're under fixed income, there are programs out there to help you get those insurances. And then anything that the insurance doesn't cover, the Small Business Administration may give, and it depends on how you're insured, may give up to a 0% loan or grant for you to be able to fix your property. But it's case by case and how that works. But it's a good question. Thank you. Yes, ma'am? The question is, how do we insure homes with all these insurance companies fleeing? That's a policy question that has to be taken up at the state level. I have opinion on that, but it's, realistically, it's a state level, that's a state level question. Any other? Yes, ma'am? So yeah, so there's two points, like I said earlier. So we have, the areas that we must cover in this plan, that are required by FEMA, are the natural hazards, right? So we're going to focus, at the beginning of this planning process, on those natural hazards. And then, then we can add in the areas that are human-caused or technological disasters into the plan as well. And FEMA doesn't really care about those necessarily. What I mean by that is they're just like, that's nice information to have. But we need to really focus on those natural hazards first because that's what they're, that's the area where we can actually mitigate, right? So for instance, if we talk about aircraft accidents, right? That's something that we're concerned about for sure, right? That's something I'm concerned about, you know, being so close to the airport. However, there aren't, like, we can't use Public Works to go and create a bubble around the city to fix that problem, right? But with a landslide or slope slide, we can actually go forth, use pre-disaster dollars into fixing the, does that make sense? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yes, sir? Not directly. And what I mean by that is like, so for instance, if it was a downed power line due to somebody like crashing a car, right? As an example, that's not really covered on how we could do this. But we can use mitigation dollars into helping like wind-resistant power lines or even potentially in some areas, depending on, well, this is more for high-fire risk areas. Not, doesn't really count for us in El Segundo necessarily. But like a high-fire risk areas, they will help pay for our lines to be buried, right? For, so because it's super expensive to bury lines. So, you know, that's kind of where I mean that directly. But on the water issue, yeah, there are for sure water on a natural hazard. So for instance, we could go retrofit sewer and water lines for earthquake, right? So we're looking at sewer and water saying, okay, these are older water lines. The water department says, hey, you know, we need to fix this, and then we can go, sure. And then we can fix those water lines with mitigation funds because we're retrofitting for earthquake. Does that make sense? So yeah, so that's a good question. So we are actually working on ways to prepare for long-term power outages. Now, it might not be citywide necessarily, but we could have, like, one of the things that we'd like to do is have hubs to where people can come, charge their phones, get information, and get some power for a short period of time. Potentially have cooling centers set up that run through solar to, if it's a hot day type thing, if during an earthquake that there's no power, we can get people into cooling centers and that. So we're working on, those are some of the ideas that I'm actually leaning forward, working on, looking for funding for those things as well. So that would fall definitely underneath this. Now, could I do a citywide solar grid for power? Probably not. But we could definitely do hubs to be able to help the residents and visitors and businesses that are here to be able to still function in some fashion. Yes, to a point. This is a state rule, not a city rule. They're now getting rid of the idea of doing gasoline-run generators, so, but you can do, you can do solar generators and, yeah. But you could buy, yeah, so yeah, I would recommend getting them now if you want to buy one. So, but yeah, generators are definitely something neat. That's a question that'd be above my P grade. I have to ask that through development. Do you know, chief, like, what, how big they can get as far as generators go? So yeah, I'm not sure what the city code is necessarily for having, like, if you bought, like, say, a full house generator, which are available, right? Like, through gas, you could do natural gas generators that way. I don't know what the city code is with that. Maybe I can, I could reach out to Michael Allen and get your email, and I'll find out what the code is for that and get back to you on that. Very good question. And so the question was, how do we get FEMA funds and who's eligible for FEMA funds? I'm going to paraphrase that. Is that close enough? Okay, so this is for the audience that's, that might not be able to hear you. So, okay, so FEMA has funding available for schools and churches, nonprofit organizations that can apply for those. And there are, you're absolutely correct. There are funds available for emergency generators and things along those lines for those. But they have to go through a grant application process, and they open periodically. They just had one open not so long ago. I don't know what the status is. They closed pretty quickly. So it's normally open for like six months. They close it, and then they'll reopen it again. So just kind of keep a eye on FEMA, the FEMA website for that. And so there are grants available for nonprofits. If any, and again, if you want to reach out to me, I'm more than happy to put you in the right direction to. It would not necessarily be part of this plan, no. But we could discuss it in the plan, you know, if there's something that you guys think is very important. We could put that in an annex and discuss that in the plan. Any other questions? Environmental protection is part of that. I'm not really sure what you're referring to, but we could talk about that offline. But yeah, so environmental protection is part of the hazard mitigation plan. Anything else? All right. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
So can we explain during one of the process of the, of the, of the plan, what we're trying?
Oh, yes. Yes, that's going to be my, that's coming up on my, on the agenda. So the question from chief was to go and explain the timeline for completion and, and yes, the timeline for completion. We, right now, we're on the clock, if you will. So we, we hired a consultant and we started the process. And so we have about a year to finish this complete plan from, from start to finish. And so my goal though is to have a, at least a draft plan coming out by the fall, by September. That's my goal, so that's what we're, that's what we're reaching for. And to have it in everybody's hands from our committee, have it in everybody's hands for review by, by the end of September, October, and then have it up to FEMA by, by the end of October, and then I'm not sure how long, once it gets there, there's a, you know, once it gets to the state and it gets to FEMA, there's a, sometimes they're delaying the process. So, so it's about a year long process right now. We'd like to expedite that as much as we can, but that's, that's kind of where we're at on the, on the timeline. And the community engagement is a super critical part of what we're doing. And so those of you that aren't in the room today, when we have our next community meeting, I'd really like to invite you to come here so we can have more dialogue about what we're doing, and then to be able to put this into our plan and to, and to discuss what are the real concerns that we, that we have for the, for the hazard mitigation and things that you would like to see us do on that side of it. I want to kind of get into this, going to close off here with some disaster tips, right? Because this is what this is about. And so my goal as the emergency manager for the city is to really create a disaster, a resilient, or a robust disaster resilient community, almost to the point of what we say anti-fragile. And that starts with you. It starts with the community member. It starts with your neighbors and, and helping your neighbors in, in a case of, of a disaster. So as we share tips with you, and if you come to our, to the booth during, on Thursdays at the farmer's market and you get some tips and stuff like that, share that with your neighbors, you know? I, I tell people all the time, the, the best way to prepare for disasters is shake the hand of your next door neighbor and make a friend. Because at the end of the day, when a disaster occurs, they're going to be the ones that are helping you. You're identifying hazards in your neighborhood, identifying hazards specifically that may impact your home, and then create emergency kits that are based upon maybe the hazards that you're facing. And develop that household plan. And disaster plans for your home, it's going to be unique to each home, how you evacuate and practice that evacuation, and where you meet, if you're going to have, you should have an offsite meeting place in case you can't get home, and, and practice that. And you could do it, it doesn't have to be in a scary way, you could do it in a fun way, especially if you have kids, you can make it a, a good time. Supporting neighbors and vulnerable populations. I tell you the story of a neighborhood that we helped prepare, my other jurisdiction that I worked in before here, and there was an elderly lady, and she was pretty much a shut-in, and the people in the neighborhood didn't really realize that she was there until they had this neighborhood meeting for preparedness. And they were able to help her get out of her home on a regular basis, to go grocery shopping, to go to the doctor's office and stuff like this. And they had community members that in the neighborhood check on her on a regular basis. It doesn't have to be something that's drastic as such as an earthquake, it's just the idea of helping neighbors, and I think that's critical, that's, it's helping support your neighbors and the community that we are here. And then renewing, I talked about this, your insurance, and then the volunteering opportunities. We have a open house coming up on May 11th at the fire department. I'd love to see you there at the open house. We have the CPR Saturday, but I think that's sold out as of this afternoon, so, but please check back to see if anybody has dropped out of that training. And then we have, starting on May 31st of this year, we're doing our community emergency response team training, and that's a lot of fun. And even if you don't decide to volunteer, take the training, you can take that information home, and you can find that information on the, on the fire department website, and I'd love to have you there in the class as well. So open it up for last remarks for anybody, and Victor, would you like the same thing, or chief?
Yeah, no, it's, I appreciate just working with fire department and other internal staff that really taking a strong approach on kind of bringing this together. This is one of my first times really being this much involved, so it is a way to be with, you know, our internal departments acting, helping this together, so just so you know that we are working every way out.
Thank you very much, Victor. I'd like to introduce Chief Avery, the Fire Chief, El Segundo Fire Department.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to share how important this process is to the city of El Segundo. And this is an approach that needs to come from the whole community, is what we call it. That's every stakeholder that we have, not only internally from every department head and our city leadership, our mayor, mayor pro temp and council, but our community members, our business owners, and our schools, and our faith-based organizations. Because this is truly a process that identifies the hazards and mitigation efforts that we will sustain for years to come. It'll also allow us to, to apply for grants from FEMA that will help us rebuild in case of a disaster. I do have to say that your emergency manager, Todd DeVoe, is incredibly experienced. His knowledge, skill, and ability is above most, nationally recognized, and we are very thankful to have him here in the city of El Segundo. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for the kind words. And I'd like to now bring the meeting to a close. I appreciate everybody who came out today. I know it's a, a day, a beautiful day like today, coming out to a meeting is probably not the first thing on your, on your list. And for those that are home that are, are watching, please come out next time. I'd love to talk to you in person, and please get involved with what we're doing here with the city, with our volunteer opportunities. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a wonderful rest of your evening.